This county board of commissioners meeting is now in session. I'm the mayor Jeff Mason. Kent, would you lead some prayers out?
Yes. Your heavenly Father, my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, thank you for this day that gave us, Lord. Thank you for your grace and mercy and your kindness to us. Thank you for your Son that died on the cross to save us, Lord. Just be with us tonight, Lord, as we go through the county's business. Give us wisdom and direction, Lord. And these things I pray in your gracious and holy name. Amen.
James? Do you want me to play the leadges?
I play the leadges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stacy, would you use your roll call?
Shannon Gray.
Here.
Lynn Reese.
Here.
Terry Givens.
Here.
Billy Bass.
Here.
Freddie Kirby.
Here.
Jason Stewart.
Here.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Here.
Daniel Cricks.
Here.
Dalton Pascal.
Here.
Shannon Michi.
Here.
Erica Evil.
Here.
Ron Schuman.
Here.
Ron Cowan.
Here.
Linda Nixon.
Here.
Roger Duke.
Here.
Charles Kent.
Here.
Bill Reese.
Here.
Tommy Vane.
Here.
Joey Nixon.
Here.
Dennis Hackett.
Here.
Dustin Dilligh.
Here.
David Gross.
Here.
Frank Woodard.
Here.
All right, item number five is the approval of the minutes from January 13th, 2020. County Commission. I know that we did find some errors in the debate. The one was the, under motion to approve notaries. There was no one who made the motion, so we gotta go back and change that. Under item number. Well, somebody made the motion. It makes a difference. It's just not noted who made that motion. And then also on the adjourned motion, it was saying that by Terry Reese, we have Terry Givens. Put them together. That's the only, that's the correction we found. Any other corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, I will take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second, by Jackson. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six is our conference minutes and it is for the District Five vacancy. In your package, you have a letter from Mr. Timmy Austin. And today, we received a letter from Chris Ray. You should have received that copy of that tonight. Mr. Austin, if you're here, would you like to come up and address the crowd for just a minute? All right, what about Mr. Chris Ray? If you're here, would you like to come up and address the body? Is there anyone else here that likes to come? Would you like to come up and talk to us?
I'm here and members of the county court. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Eddie Stow. I have lived in Smith County just about all my life, ever since I was just a real young boy. And I farmed for a good portion of my younger years. And then later on, I went to real estate and auctioneer school, where I have been engaged in the real estate and auction business for approximately 40 years. I was co-owner of Carthage Real Estate for several years. Then I opened my own office over in Gainesboro for a while. And then I had the opportunity to join with a large auction company in Cogwell Taze Auctions Company. I'm sure most of you have heard of them. And I've been working with them for about 20 years. And I'm currently semi-retired right now, but I'm still busier than I've ever been in my life because I'm helping take care of my father-in-law and my brother-in-law's cattle. Have a lot of cattle and we're taking care of those. The only thing I would say in addition to that, I live in Gornsville with my wife Pound. I have a daughter, two granddaughters. One thing I would promise each and every one of you that if you were see fit to put me on the county court, I would always listen to anything that come before the court, try to make an honest decision about it. I would try to listen diligently to anything that come before it. I know I've spoke with a lot of you, some of you I couldn't get a hold of because I didn't have a phone number to call you with. But I've also been told by you, they had to support someone else. And I want you guys to know, gals too, if there is any of you, that I would have no hard feelings with you whatsoever for supporting someone else. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to be considered a nominee?
Mayor, Commissioners, Jimmy Gregory. I've lived in the county for 21 years now. The only time I've actually been out of the county for 21 years is on my stint in the military. Got 24 years, just retired in November in the reserves. Been on Gordon's Fire Department for 16 years and worked with the Smith County Sheriff's Department for the past 10 years. I'm a sergeant with Smith County. I've dedicated my life to helping serve my community, my country. And I'd just like to continue on, see if I can't do it here.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to be considered for nomination and like to speak tonight? If not, is there any questions from the body for the candidates that spoke? If not, I would take a nomination from the floor for someone.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Jimmy Gregory.
The nomination, Mr. Jimmy Gregory, do I get a second?
Second.
Second candidate.
Mr. Gregory, I'd like to recommend Eddie Stow.
Okay. Got a second on that?
Second.
Second, Jazz Kemp. Any other nominations?
Mayor, I'll nominate Mr. Ray.
All right. Chris Ray, do I get a second? Second. Second. You said the second. All right, so any other nominations? So we have three nominations, we seconded. Brandon, would you kind of talk us through the three we picked for running in this how it needs to proceed?
Historically, what we've done in Smith County is we have a nomination for three candidates or more. The top two vote getters will have a runoff. Now, if you haven't tied with any of that, we'll have to run off those two that tie. If those are in the second place, if they're ready, understand what I'm saying. So you run the first two off.
Even if one of them gets majority?
If one of them gets the majority, the next, well, no, excuse me. The top two vote getters, there will be a runoff between those two if there's a tie on that. And then we'll have runoff.
If somebody gets 13 votes?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm sure.
So that's what we've done historically in that area. The, of course, what we would need at this point, we would not, we would need a name. It's in a roll call, not necessarily a yada-yada name. Given the fact of the number of, there's three candidates.
Since this is District Five, we start with a name.
Ron Cowan.
Does everybody understand what we're doing? Just make sure, okay.
Ron Cowan.
Eddie Stow.
Linda Nixon.
Eddie Stow.
Shannon Gray.
Eddie Stow.
Lynn Reese.
Jimmy Gregory.
Terry Givens.
Mr. Stow.
Billy Bass.
Mr. Stow.
Freddie Kirby.
Eddie Stow.
Jason Stewart.
Jimmy Gregory.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Mr. Stow.
Daniel Cricks.
Mr. Stow.
Dalton Pascal.
Mr. Stow.
Shannon Michi.
Jimmy Gregory.
Erica Evil.
Mr. Stow.
Ron Schuman.
Eddie Stow.
Roger Duke.
Mr. Stow.
Charles Kent.
Mr. Stow.
Bill Reese.
Mr. Stow.
Tommy Vane.
Mr. Stow.
Joey Nixon.
Mr. Stow.
Dennis Hackett.
Mr. Stow.
Dustin Dilligh.
Mr. Gregory.
David Gross.
Mr. Gregory.
Frank Woodard.
Mr. Stow.
Vote tunnel is 18 for Mr. Eddie Stow, 5 for Jimmy Gregory. Mr. Eddie Stow is appointed as the district minister. One thing I want to say, even if you weren't knocked, even if you didn't get placed tonight, you can pick your papers up tomorrow and these, all four of these seats that we've replaced this year are on the ballot in office. So I would encourage anybody that wants to run in those districts that we replaced the seats this year to pick your papers up and run. All right, number seven, amendments to the general approval agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? If not, I take a motion to approve the agenda.
Full move.
Take it. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Dustin Dilligh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, number eight, county mayor report. With us meeting so frequently now, it's harder to come up with updates. County website, we're still gathering information on that. Thank you to everybody that has sent that information. We're working on it to get that done. Our purchasing policy went live the first of February, so we're working through that. That's about the good things, of course, we're starting into budget season, so good times. We will move on. You have your financial reports, cash flows, your summary financial statement, the overview, and the board bench catching financial statements. Are there any questions on that? If not, we'll move on to item number nine, committee reports. Any questions concerning any of the committees that may have since we last met? No, we're going to number 10, new business announcements. Mr. David Gross brought it to our attention here the other day. Mr. David Plasman, wonderful guy, picking up trash and cleaning up the brush streak area. And we kind of want to recognize him for going above and beyond to do his city duty. So if he wasn't, if he's here, if he comes forward and we'll read you this proclamation.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Whereas for the past three-plus years, Mr. David Plasman has worked on keeping the county free of trash and debris along many well-traveled roads. David has spent these years traveling Smith County and making his goal to keep his hometown beautiful. And whereas David has collected 400 to 500 bags of trash since beginning his endeavor, and whereas, having grown up in Smith County, David's motivation is making sure Smith County is kept as beautiful as possible and will continue to do so as long as possible. The majority of that trash that is collected is done by David alone, although he does have help from time to time. Now therefore, the Smith County mayor on this 10th day of February 2020 does hereby present this letter of honor to Mr. David Plasman for his efforts and willingness in helping keep our roads clear of trash and debris and our lands beautiful. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
item number, approvals in your package, there's a lease agreement between Smith County Landfield and Kent Taylor that is for the crockland out at the landfill. The only change in that, we gotta go back and make a change in, is the wording. The wording says 7,500 and the number says 10,155, that's an oversight on my part. We'll get that fixed before we get that signed. Just wanted to present that too. Does that need approval on that?
Yes, sir.
All right, I would take a motion to approve.
So moved, sir.
Jazz and Ron Schuman. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, the 10,155 is correct.
Yes, that is.
Not the other.
It is correct. 10,155, we didn't pay it back in January? Yes. Yes, that is the correct number. 10,155 is the lease price. Any other questions? All right.
Shannon Gray.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Freddie Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Daniel Cricks.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Michi.
Yes.
Erica Evil.
Yes.
Ron Schuman.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Roger Duke.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Tommy Vane.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Dennis Hackett.
Yes.
Dustin Dilligh.
Yes.
David Gross.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
Yes.
Item D are resolutions. Item one through four are budget resolutions or budget amendments. We're going to decide the budget. We can bring them together, approve them, or we can pull them out and vote.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve items one through four altogether.
Mr. Mayor, could you get a second on that?
So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Shannon Gray.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Freddie Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Daniel Cricks.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Michi.
Yes.
Erica Evil.
Yes.
Ron Schuman.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Roger Duke.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Tommy Vane.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Dennis Hackett.
Yes.
Dustin Dilligh.
Yes.
David Gross.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
Yes.
Item number five is a resolution in support of the Second Amendment for Smith County and considering thus a sanctuary seating in 27H. This started talking about, I started researching in December and I have talked with attorneys, with mayors, with sheriffs, with everybody I could think of to try to find the right one that made the most sense for our county and was the most, I'd like to better term, most simple wording that we could come up with on that. It kind of hurts my heart that we've come to this point in our country that we have to pass an amendment to support the Second Amendment. I believe that that should have been never put into question. That's one of our rights that should never be infringed upon, in my opinion. But here we are, and so we're going to pass one tonight showing our support for it. I would present that resolution as written to the floor for approved.
Motion to approve. Sir.
I have a motion and a second to approve as written. David Gross made a motion, Frank Woodard, second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
All right.
First, there's several different typos that I would like to fix in paragraph, second to last paragraph, where it says encourage our representatives to be OUR. And then state law that infringes on a citizen's second amendment right. That needs to be fixed. There's some formatting errors where there's semicolons before the "and" and not after the "and", or after the "and" and not before the "and" in the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down at paragraph end. And then some more semicolon issues just in that, in the first two paragraphs.
We can fix, we can use.
Yeah, those formatting errors that need to be fixed.
Do we need a motion, or may I have an amendment?
We can grammatically correct that.
It doesn't change the meaning or anything.
It doesn't, it doesn't change the sentence.
We can add a fix.
And I do have some amendments, so I printed off some. I did email these as well, but I printed some off some copies for tonight as well. So I'd like to go. All right, so the first one, I want to make a motion to amend that resolution in paragraph three, where it states, whereas the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution adopted in 1791 as part of the Bill of Rights protects the inalienable and individual right of the people to keep their arms. And I would like to change that to clearly prohibits any infringement on the inalienable and individual rights. My justification for that is that the Bill of Rights itself is not constitutional protection in that it doesn't grant us rights. It prohibits the infringement of those rights by any government power. I think it's very important that we're very clear about what the Bill of Rights is, what the Second Amendment is. So that's my motion.
All right, I have a motion to change that wording, do I have a second? I have no second, so do you amend that?
Okay, I can move on to my next amendment. In paragraph four, whereas the Tennessee Constitution, Article One, Section 26 declares that the citizens of this state have a right to keep and bear arms for the common defense, that the legislature shall have power by law to regulate the wearing of arms with a view to prevent crime. I would like to take that whole section that I put in red out, that the legislature should have power by law to regulate the wearing of arms with a view to prevent crime. My justification for that is that the Bill of Rights clearly spells out in the Second Amendment, the right of people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. If what we're doing here is basically saying, look, this is our, these are our rights and we're not going to have them infringed upon by any government, we don't need to limit the rights for us to bear arms. There, it doesn't need to be justification, there doesn't need to be a reason for us to bear arms. And when we're going in there and limiting it with the view to prevent crime, I think that we're limiting ourselves. So that's my.
Which motion?
Motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All right, if I don't have a second, I'll have one either.
Okay.
All right. Any other amendments?
Yes, the other change. There's two more.
Oh, okay.
Paragraph five, whereas the United States Supreme Court has affirmed an individual's rights to possess firearms unconnected with service of militia for traditionally lawful purposes such as self-defense within the home. I would like to drop that, I'd actually like to drop that entire sentence. We're providing example and restrictions on how an individual can bear arms. We're not talking about, the right to bear arms is not just for self-defense. If you're thinking about the time period when this was written, our founding fathers had just finished fighting a war against a tyrannical government. They were forming, you know, the states were kind of coming under this federal rule and they were having issues with the fact that they were losing some of their sovereignty. And they had concerns. And this was, the Bill of Rights was a way to address those concerns of the states and of the individuals that their rights weren't going to be stepped on. Like I said before, it is not a list of the rights we have as individuals. It is a list of prohibitions on infringement from the government. So I'd like to drop that. That's my motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All right, number second. Now, the motion number four.
Okay, last motion. Whereas it is the desire of the Smith County Commission to declare support of the United States Constitution and the Second Amendment to protect the inalienable and individual rights to keep and bear arms, I want to add, it's the desire and the duty of Smith County Commission, seeing as how we all took the constitutional oath. And again, to change that wording from protect to prohibit infringement of the inalienable and individual rights of Smith County citizens. We all have rights. They're not afforded to us by the Bill of Rights. They are prohibited from infringement by the government by the Bill of Rights. So I want to change that to add, and the duty, because it is our duty as commissioners to protect our constituents' rights there. And we took the constitutional oath and then changed the wording.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion, item four. Is there a second? All right, number second. Any other amendments to that resolution? If not, I would take a motion to approve as written.
I don't have any more motions, I just like to say something. I just want to make it clear that this resolution's not an attempt to make a new law. It is, it's our message, it's a clear message that we're sending to our legislature that they need to uphold the constitutional laws that are already in place and uphold the rights of the citizens of Smith County. This itself is not, it's not something that is going to change any laws right now, but it's basically saying, you know, this is what the citizens of Smith County want and these are our expectations, this is what we understand our rights to be, and this is what we expect. So I'm.
All right, so I have a motion and a second.
And this is to approve what was presented to us with.
Resolution number 02202005 as written.
Well, with the command of the.
With the command of the, sorry.
I'd like to ask that we do a roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak with the motion just a minute?
Yes, sir.
And in the second act, 2A sanctuary here, I've had several people contacting me about it and I'm 100% for this. I've had several people contacting me about it, and I'm a hundred percent for this. And in all honesty, you can put a periods, commas, change wording on this piece of paper right here, but it's not going to override the United States Constitution, which gives us the right to bear arms plain and simple. And that's the end of discussion. So this is just our support showing that this is our stance in Smith County.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? Roll call, thank you.
Shannon Grier.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Freddie Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jamie Winfrey.
Yes.
Daniel Cricks.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Michi.
Yes.
Erica Evil.
Yes.
Ron Schuman.
Yes.
Ron Callen.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Roger DeW.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Tommy Bane.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Dennis Hackett.
Yes.
Dustin Delahaye.
Yes.
David Gross.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
Yes.
You answered it fast, thank you very much. All right, item D is no rears, we're going to list those in the page.
Motion approved.
I have a motion to approve Dennis Hackett, item D. Ron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. And other business for your presentation is the reinvestment policy change, state county election commission drug policy change, a three-dollar fiscal letter, trustee bid opening from the finance department. All right, just for your information. Number three, want you to adjourn?
Oh, adjourn.
Okay. David Gralz.
Item D is old, of you, it's not like the old package. Old package had other decisions for them.
Right.
We've got the one largest crowd we have here tonight. And I wish that you or Mr. Nixon wanted to take five minutes and explain to this crowd about the wheel taxes that are coming up.
Okay.
And maybe that would take some of the public college stuff off of us when you two speak about the wheel taxes.
All right, you have two wheel taxes that will be on your ballot for election March third, early November, March Monday's day. One is a twenty-five dollars and it goes to the capital projects for the road department. That money would be somewhere around four hundred fifty thousand dollars you're going to go over the roads to be enjoying.
Yeah, it's going to be a little bit.
Right, somewhere around four hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's about half of what we've left down. So that would go to the roads for roads improvements and capital project line. The other is a twenty-five dollar wheel tax that will go to the general fund in three years. That is to offset property tax. Now, depending on what the penny value comes back at, last year it was around thirty-nine six. So if you take that math, that's somewhere around ten to twelve cents a property tax. That if that wheel tax goes in, that property tax would be reduced somewhere in the ten to twelve cent range, barring any major emergencies and barring that that penny value stays the same, which we feel like it will be about the same this year. And that's based on, that penny value is, Terry was here to explain it better, that takes all the tax dollars and breaks it down into our tax rate and that's every penny of the two seventy-three is worth thirty-nine thousand six last year. So you're looking at reducing property taxes somewhere in the ten to twelve cent range on that. The other one is a sales tax resolution, and that just puts our sales tax back right in the county to nine and three-quarters. If you're buying goods inside carse or borsal right now, you are already paying nine and three-quarter percent, so you're already paying that tax. So.
We're bringing about the same amount, I don't remember exactly, it could be around ten cents and be looking at around the ten cent coming out of that cap. Sales tax is more confusing because they just changed the state sales tax laws.
Right.
Mayor knows a lot more about that than I do.
Well, with, yeah, the internet sales tax, we're still gathering, we started, they started collecting internet sales taxes at state level in October. Our sales tax numbers, we are already estimated to be down for the year. I think it's around twenty-three percent is what we estimated them to be down. But they're actually not down, twenty-three percent is more like eight percent in October, November, December. December, I haven't got December yet either. So we were somewhere down there, so we've gained money on the internet sales tax and we think December will be a big month on that. We've also had, you know, you remember the Barrett company came in, we did that. They have found a few things that they're changing to businesses that were inside the city that should be county money, so that's, those letters will go out as far as changing those designations where that money goes. One of those being Rome Rock City Dollar Store. It was going south, ours is now becoming back to the county on that side. So.
You may note that the sunset on the wheel tax.
Yes, the wheel tax, ten years on the highway one and three years on the general fund. Sales tax would not have, we did not put a sunset on it to it. It is a true duty tax, which is probably the best.
Mr. Flipp, I'll talk you through how many businesses in Smith County.
Last time we had a count on that, I don't even remember, it's grossed so much.
The one time is like eighteen-five or something like that one. That's about the middle of last year.
Probably around.
We estimated both of those to be somewhere in the four hundred fifty thousand dollar range with twenty-five dollars short before.
You and I looked at it, it was a twenty-eighteen year, I think we were looking at.
Yeah, and I got Steve, Steve did ask to do it.
Yeah.
Right, and one thing about that wheel tax against the property tax is the wheel tax helps you on your cash flow. You don't, you have more money coming in on a steady flow versus just getting money from October to February. So that would, that would push us closer to not having to borrow that money from start of the year. Mr. Copley, would you care to speak on yours?
I'd like to explain to the citizens what four hundred fifty thousand dollars is equal to. Four hundred fifty thousand dollars for blacktop across three and a half miles of road at a hundred thirty thousand dollars a mile. And that's a good number, I promise. So it's not like, it's a lot of money for what it sells.
What would that be on the tar and chip side, Steve?
Tar and chip side, you'd probably. About fifteen miles, on a chip.
Any other questions? Mr. Gross, is that? That do okay? Explain it? Okay. Any other discussion before we adjourn? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
Dennis Hackett, second, Frank Woodard. I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?